Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for joining us. I just may have your attention, my name is John Hickman, Town Supervisor, you probably know me already. This is typically a workshop meeting night, but because we have a very important project before us, we are open, we're going to hold a special public hearing to adopt and approve the map plan report for what we call now the Hopewell North Water District, which is actually the Ryan Drive, Hopewell Precision Superfund Water District to service, serve water to this whole area that's been affected. And I wanted just to introduce Lorenzo Fan too, is going to give us about a half hour presentation. Most of you in this room already know the history of the site and where we've gone. Lorenzo's been here as far as I can remember, and he's going to bring us up to date to where we are today. So with that Lorenzo, I'd like to thank you for coming, and if you'd like to come up, or if you'd like to stand.
I'll stay over here Supervisor.
Okay.
It's good, right? Can everyone hear me? All right, good evening everyone. Cecilia, okay, next page. For tonight's presentation, I'll spend about fifteen, twenty minutes basically going over the same PowerPoint slides that we used at last year's January 2014 Public Availability Session also here. And I think most of you already know the first three agenda items on the background information, history of the Hopewell Precision Superfund Site, and the history of the two records of decision that we've signed back in 2008 and 2009. So what I'd like to do is, I'd like to briefly and quickly go through those slides for Items 1 and 2, and spend some time on the ongoing remedial design activities for the Hopewell Alternate Water Supply, and then go over the schedule for the design and remedial action with focus on the map plan and report, which is the focus of tonight's public hearing. So that's just the site map, and that's the fifteen and nineteen Ryan Drive, where Hopewell Precision Inc. is located. And the Hopewell Groundwater Contamination Area stretches all the way down in the south westward direction to Red Wing Lake Recreational Park. And here are the western and eastern boundaries of the groundwater contamination plume, which more or less coincides with the Hopewell North Water District that we'll be talking a little bit more about later. And just a quick history, you know, fifteen nineteen Ryan Drive, fifteen Ryan Drive operated in 1977 to 1980, and 1980, the business was moved to adjacent parcel nineteen Ryan Drive. And here's description of the OU1 rot in 2009, and OU2 rot in 2008. OU2 rot, operable unit 2 rot is the alternate water supply. This resulted in all the work that we are doing right now with the alternate water supply remedial design activities. And I'm not going to go through these slides, these few slides just tell you the history of what EPA have done since 2010 in looking for viable and potential water source. And then 2012, you know, we started working on Cannon and Well Field, June 2012, the town of East Fishkill purchased Cannon and Well Field. And then based on all the tests that were done, we found out that the aquifer there is more than viable to provide more than enough water to the Hopewell District area. And here's the groundwater contamination plume, more or less coincides with the Hopewell Groundwater Contamination Area map that I showed to you earlier. The primary contaminants are two VOCs, trichloroethylene TCE and tri- 111 trichloroethylene, 111 TCA. And now the map plan and report, this is what we are here for tonight. The map plan and report is required by New York State Town Law Section 209 for creation of any water district, and we have to comply with certain state requirements to create it. And also Town of East Fishkill needs it to go through its process to create the Hopewell North Water District. So what we have done is, map plan report actually identifies and defines the district area that will have about 352 parcels within the district. And in terms of acreage, it's about 613 acres. And also map plan report estimated the average daily and maximum daily water usage that would be required for the Hopewell District. And the estimates are for the average daily water demand about 130 gallons per day, and for maximum daily water demand, 260,000 gallons per day. And as part of the remedial design work, we also are designing a storage tank. That's going to give us the needs for domestic water use and also fire protection. And that tank will be sized at 310,000 gallons. And so as part of this ongoing design work, you know, EPA will incur all the expenses to design and install all the water main piping, water storage tank, metering station to monitor the water usage, service connection to each of the homes in the Hopewell North Water District, et cetera. This is the Hopewell North Water District figure, that's also in the Hopewell Map and Plan Report. And there's another map outside too, that shows all the tech slots within these boundaries. So here's a quick schedule for the ongoing design work. This is where we are tonight, March 12th, the town's public hearing to create Hopewell North Water District. And the map plan and report was finalized and completed in January last month. And through the ongoing design, we go through three major remedial design stages, 30%, 95%, and 100% remedial design. Here are the dates, April for 30%, September for 95%, and December for 100%. So final design, 100% design is expected to be completed by the end of this calendar year. And we also have to do some work since we have decided to go with the Cannon and Well Field Water Supply System, which is now being called, I believe, East Fishkill Water Service Area. And we have to do a lot of field work between the Hopewell hookup area and where the Cannon and Well Field property is geotechnical boring for where the main piping lines will be constructed. We have to do like wetlands delineations where it's needed, and also cultural resources survey to see if there are any cultural artifacts that we need to be aware of. And so the big work will be the transmission main route between the Cannon and Well Field and Hopewell North Water District, and also the storage tank. So we'll have to, we are in the process of hiring several subcontractors to do that work that will consist of drilling, surveying, lab, chemical analyses, and cultural resources. So here are the components for the 95% and 100% design. So through this work between May and end of the December 2015, all these agencies will be involved in reviewing and giving EPA approvals for the design submittals, New York State Department of Health, and also New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, Dutchess County Department of Public Works, and of course, the Town of East Fishkill. So we'll have to work with New York State DEC, and also US Army Call for any permit application that we might need to submit for wetlands area that we'll be doing work in. And for the design, New York State Department of Health is instrumentally involved because we have to comply with all of New York State Department of Health technical requirements for the design submittals, all three submittals, 30%, 95%, and 100%. Finally, at the end, we'll get to 100% design, which will include final design plans and specifications, and also the remedial action cost estimate for the Hopewell infrastructure. And then that will lead to bids and construction, contract award. So in terms of schedule for design and construction, design's about two years, and construction's is another two years, taking a total of four years. And here's a contact information for the Hopewell site file and documents, there are two locations, one is right here at Town of East Fishkill Community Library, and the other repository is at our EPA building in New York City at 290 Broadway. For any kind of inquiries, you can contact Cecilia Ackles, who is here with us tonight. And that's really a very brief run-through of the PowerPoint that I wanted to go over. And I think we still have about fifteen minutes to take any questions and answers from the And also I have Paul Gabrelle here, he's the lead design engineer from our contractor, CDM Smith, for any technical question. Paul will be prepared to answer that.
Yeah, just a quick question, the design will take by the year, the end of December, they'll take about two years of construction, three years of construction, and then the same panel said you have two years.
I'm sorry, four years for two years design and two years construction.
Two years?
Yes. Which started like about a year ago.
Oh, oh, when you were.
Yeah, yeah. But don't forget too, like, you know, we went through a lot of stop stages with the design because we did not have the viable water source. And some of you here probably know the history, back in 2009, we had a public availability session, December 2009, and we went over three sources, water sources that were selected in the 2009 record decision. And at that time, we thought we were going to go with Beakman Water Company. And, you know, we were hopeful for about a year and a half until that fell through the crack. And then after that, we looked at another water source, Four Corners, that didn't work out. And then in 2012, the town came to us, very optimistic with their new acquisition of the Cannon and Well Field. And that's where we have been for the last two years.
If all goes well, you look at the end of December, we should be right.
If all goes well, there's like a one, obviously, there's one condition which we will get to later. Right now for the ongoing remedial design, we have secured the funds necessary for CDM Smith to complete it by the end of this calendar year. And the next stage after that is construction of the Hopewell Infrastructure, for which right now, we don't have that construction money. And that construction estimated is about $14 million. But we are hopeful that once we get to at least 95% remedial design, you know, we can go to EPA headquarters to try to get the money needed for construction.
So let me ask you a question. On the moment handout, on, I guess, is your, 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 your map on number eight, which is the Hopewell contaminant pool? If you go to that, I'd really appreciate it. That Hopewell contaminant pool, might I understand that that's a map of the pool as recent as 2013?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Well, just as one resume, over all this time, I have requested a map like that, that's readable for a number of years, even before 2013. So I for one would really appreciate if the EPA could hear this request once again for a current map, and 2013 is the most current, I guess I'd have to live with it, of existing pool. I for one would like to see the difference in the pool from where it was initially to where we are now. All we have gotten, all for this period of time, is rhetoric. And here again, we're with rhetoric. We're talking about things that will someday happen maybe. So if you hear me, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
My request is for current map of the pool, and one that I can read out would be very great.
All right, I guess, I totally understand where you are coming from. In terms of the plume, this was like the fourth time that we had updated the groundwater contaminant map for the Hopewell site. And that was based on 2013 groundwater data. And obviously, we have been looking very closely at the trends of the groundwater contamination and its dynamics within this plume. And based on like four or five groundwater updates that we have done, the first time was when we did the remedial investigation study back in 2008. Basically, the plume has not moved. And it's more or less in the state of equilibrium. The levels have gone down dramatically, some locations, it's gone down by an order of magnitude. But in terms of the fingerprints of the plume, the plume has been pretty much stable. And I can tell you that last year, 2014, we did another round of groundwater sampling. And we are in the process of updating this map right now. So more or less, we update the plume like every year, every year and a half. And I'm pretty sure that the new map that we are going to be getting, it's not going to be that much different from this plume that you are looking at. But I see where you're coming from, we've had the same concern.
They get copy.
I know it's in the, all these maps are in the site repository. If you want to get one sooner, maybe I can speak to you after this hearing, I'll send the PDFs to you. Hi Deborah.
Hi. First question, the EPA and the town, this, I for one appreciate it. Question, why is the tank the Little Switzerland? Why is the oil business coming back?
That's to do with like, you know, engineering considerations, hydraulics and all that. Paul can easily respond to that question. And that's a good question.
No, thank you Deborah. It was, it primarily was located in that vicinity because that was the, we needed to have the storage tank up at a certain elevation. Essentially, the water is above everyone's home, if you could picture it. So when you turn on the faucet, the water runs out by gravity, and that's based on the pressure that's helped equalize by the tank. So we had to find an area where we could go and have the tank up at a certain elevation that would provide us the pressure. Now, as you know, where the plume is in the center is a very flat area. So to get us the elevation, we had two options. One option was to build a tall.
Big tall elevated water storage tank, or move off the, kind of move up towards, toward where we had some elevation gain, off towards, off Dogwood, and put a storage tank at ground level there. So those are the two options, the most cost-effective, and we felt the most cost-effective, and actually the quickest one to implement, was to put the tank on a property that we felt we could get access to. Because if you could imagine, we would have had to put potentially a hundred plus foot tall tank in the middle of, it was a really big, so.
One more question, is that tank going to be connected in anyway to the tank that's already there?
Well, there's no tank on that property, but there's no plan right now to interconnect the two water systems. Okay.
Are we going to be paying rent to Little Switzerland?
I don't know.
For the, I'm not going to say, for the use of the property, the property will be appraised, and I think it's created a parcel. So a rent will be due to Little Switzerland Water Company, who owns that parcel from you before, from the Hopewell North for the use of that space.
All right. But I just want to remind you too, that the public meeting is actually going to start at seven o'clock, and that's the official one. So a lot of these questions, you know, we may want to have on the record officially at seven o'clock, correct?
Lorenzo, if you'd like, I know there are some maps outside, if anybody, it's really your call, if you'd like to take more questions here, you asked for a Q and A. More questions here, or if you'd like to make them part of the record, it's certainly up to you, want to take more questions now.
We have another ten minutes, so we can do that.
Yes, sir. In the lobby, the maps show the blue lines of the proposed district, and the person had a question about the blue line, the moving up, would that be better addressed to the town, or to the EPA?
I think that would be better addressed to the town. Okay. I mean, the blue line is drawn in, the district line is drawn in based on, obviously, the plume map, okay? We also had gone through various iterations of the map to make sure that the town was also on board with what properties were proposing to be in and to be out, okay? But.
It's exactly such a way that they exclude the case of my property, I'd like to have a booth.
Which, okay, I'd be interested to know which one it is. All right. But I'll be outside, I'll be interested to know which one it is, okay?
I think you guys could talk, I'll just leave it to the EPA to say, talk to the town on that one. So that's always the way. And but I just tell you, you know, what had happened, our engineering department has been working very closely with the EPA over the last, I don't know, probably three or four months on a weekly basis. And the creation of the district was a very big part of this. We identified where the plume was, we identified by roads, what should be in, what should be out, and I think that we came up a pretty comprehensive map. And certainly, Mark, if you'd like to speak and ask about your property, and I forget, you know, there are some in the plume area that will, will be connected if this project is approved and everything goes forward. I think there were some that were not in the plume, that you, that the main would walk by, go by, and if you're out of it, you would connect, you would have the ability to connect, you'd have to pay for it, being it's not in the plume, but you, I believe we calculated enough for water storage and enough water supply to take into account anybody that's not in it, but would like to connect that later in.
Yeah. I mean, the intent was not to, like, if, when we, when I went through the parcel information, the intent was not to cut somebody, if that parcel would have the same owner, I don't know how I missed that, but it should have been probably together, okay?
I think we took a pretty conservative approach, right? Would you say Paul?
Correct.
As many as we could.
Just a more question, if you have not received the reports from the last two testing, are you?
You know what, I've gone all the emails, thank you all that you have sent to Cecilia, and it just that, you know, I've been quite busy. And I'm like responsible for preparing all those results letters to you guys, but one thing I can tell you is that, for example, for the round that we did in September 2014, it took about two, three months for us to get the validated results back from the laboratory and EPA chemist. The first thing I did was that I looked at all those data right away, and the data came back non-detect, and no concern. So I'm taking.
You want to say the same thing, the last meeting we're at, you were sure you had it happening before.
Right. Because I know, okay, I apologize for that, but I know some people who contacted me again, I actually went ahead and sent either letters out, or I emailed the results out. And I do have all these results with EPA letterheads in like one big box, you know, we have about maybe like, about 400 letters for like about 180 homes, that I hope will be going out next week. But I will be more than happy to email the results to you like tomorrow, if you want to talk to me about it. Otherwise, within about a week, you know, you all should be getting results for 2014 September round. I apologize for that, yeah.
How many storage tanks do you have?
For the Hopewell North Water District, we are only designing, we'll be constructing one storage tank.
Where would that be?
That would be on the Little Switzerland Well Field, off of Dogwood Road.
Little Switzerland?
Sure.
Little Switzerland?
Oh, yeah, it's like, like over here somewhere, right Paul? Dogwood Road. It's slightly to the east.
For the round?
Yeah. Yeah, Little Switzerland's right here.
So you only have one tank, is that correct?
One new tank that we are going to be constructing.
Is that confirmed?
Concerned in terms of?
Lorenzo, if I may, and obviously, I'm not an engineer, but my engineers let me talk, so I have engineers all over the place. There will be a storage tank at the Well Field site too. So I believe, but this is, because of, I think if the engineers can correct me if I'm wrong, because of the length of the distance of this main, they need another tank at that end too. But at our Well Field site on the Cannon property, we're going to have a tank there too. So there actually be two, we're going to build one, and they're going to build one out, out towards the end of the line.
But that's separate, like the Cannon, East Fishkill?
That's ours.
Is separate from the town?
Yeah. But we're going to be servicing your area and other areas in the town, yours is one of them, that will be serviced by our tank also.
Pumping water all the way up? Water that all the way up down, right?
Well, we fill our tank, then we send it up, and it goes up to your tank, and then it goes down.
Yeah, I mean.
You could ask our engineers to answer that question.
You got it exactly.
Yeah.
Did I get it right?
Okay.
It goes from the Cannon Well Field.
Yep.
It's pumped over to the tank on Dogwood Road, and then from there, it comes back down.
Yeah.
Yes.
And when they say comes up and down, it does not actually go, it's, there's not a one-way street to the tank and back. It's kind of like, you know, it's on the system, the conceptual design for the water system is that there's a booster pump station with chlorination over towards Route 8, Route 50, Route 82 and Old Farm Road, at that intersection, right where the power lines are. We are going to be putting a water booster station in there to make sure that we can get the water to the required pressures for the Hopewell North Water System. The water will then, you know, turn on, fill the storage tank, and then shut off. And that cycle will then repeat. The reason why we actually want the water, want the storage tank, it provides actually a nice, consistent water pressure for the system. It also provides emergency storage, it also provides fire protection, it has a number of, a number of advantages to having it. And actually, it's not a, it is the most efficient way actually of using energy in terms of pumping, to turn on the pump when you need it, and then shutting it off and letting it run by gravity. And these are very low-pressure pumps.
310 gallons?
Yes.
But if you're on the same site where the Little Switzerland pump house is, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So Little Switzerland, who let us use their water, but they don't mind renting from us for the first time? Is it very?
No, I understand the concern, yes, yep.
So it's good that it's 310,000 gallons, because you need that much by what, don't you? You're supposed to have a tank large enough so that if you have a water emergency or in case you have a problem with your line, of water recovery.
Correct, that is correct. And actually, upfront, we actually, about a month ago, submitted a, what would we call it, kind of a conceptual sizing of the water system to DOH. We had actually had Dutchess County in for a joint meeting, we presented them with the information. Again, it was workshop to find the correct waters, you know, the storage of the tank that the town was happy with, EPA was happy with, and DEC, I'm sorry, Dutchess County Department of Health would also approve. It actually, initially, it was a little smaller, we spoke with the town, they advocated for a slightly larger tank, we agreed, Dutchess County also agreed that's how the size is. So we've done a lot of, some of the preliminary homework already with DEC to make sure that they would be happy with this information.
Do you, Little Switzerland has a water emergency, and it has water, will they purchase water from us?
They would have to.
They haven't done that.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
That is something we have to consider.
Exactly. EPA is not, not connecting the two systems.
Okay.
So.
Between rent, you know, they should pay us the water.
Yeah, but there's no, but there's no connection, yeah.
We can't do it. We're going to block it.
Um, I have a question. What if Little Switzerland, not the one, is for, another scenario, what if Little Switzerland gets the tank built and then denies us access to it? Because then we're.
No, no, I understand the concern, no, no, I, yes, yes.
Rent astronomically, to meet their needs, which are extensive at this time.
The tank.
Can we wait to answer these questions until?
Oh, sure, we could do that. Now, we're going to open up the public hearing, and I would just like to make one point, that this is going, this tank is proposed for Little Switzerland, is going to be piped into your system, it is going to be leased from their property, there is going to be no non-leasing, non-taking the tank, not letting you guys have the tank.
Suppose they choose to stop leasing the property, which.
We'll discuss that with the attorney, but I do not believe that is an option.
I would like that on the public record screen.
Absolutely.
And I would also like to know what will happen if they do not, I mean, they didn't want us to begin with.
No, I understand that, I understand that, and we will make this part of the public record.
And what about raising the rent astronomically, if we get in?
The rent is going to be based upon, I believe I said before, the rate, the rent is going to be based upon a fair appraisal by an outside party, who's going to appraise the property, and what the value of a lease of this section of that property would be. So they are not going to be controlling your rent, the rent will be based on a fair appraisal.
John, can we buy the property for some reason?
I do not believe we can, or you can, but I think we can rest assured it will be taken care of in a manner that will protect you, okay? And them. We look, I have to look out for both districts, your district and their district. They are due rent if you have your tank on their property, and you are due, if you're to have your tank to pay the rent, you are due your water and your access to it. I mean, it's very simple. And we'll make sure that everybody has their rights, absolutely. So I can assure you of that. So why don't we break, well, actually, why don't we go to the public hearing? With that, I'd like to thank Lorenzo. Would, I'd like to thank Lorenzo, and Paul, and you gentlemen will be here with us if we have any more questions during the public hearing. Thank you very much. Make sure all the switches are on. Give him a smaller tape, it's a little tough. Here, Mike. Here, up to you. Testing. Okay. How's that, Nick? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming tonight, it's special, March 2012, 2015, special town board meeting being held on consideration of the Hopewell formation of the Hopewell North Water District. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, as everybody's been here, the EPA had, it started at 6:30, had a discussion, a little presentation on the, where we are presently with the Hopewell Precision Superfund Site and the possible Hopewell remediation and supply of water to what we can call now the Hopewell North Water District, there are placards out front. Lorenzo Thantu gave a very, I thought, a good summary of where we are. I would just like to say, before we get started, I think that two things have happened, the purchase of the Cannon property well fields and subsequent testing to show that there's enough water in our well fields and offer that to the EPA really helped to break the logjam, because we seemed to be stalled for so many years, and we have been meeting, as I think I said prior to the meeting, probably for the last four months, our engineers have been working, probably more than that, our engineers have been working very, very closely with EPA on a weekly basis to move this project along, we're very, very happy about where this project seems to be going, and tonight is the adoption of the map plan report and the formation of the Hopewell North Water District, and this is a legal matter, but I think one of the things everybody has to understand is the closer we get to the actual formation of the district, as far as we can get in the design, all this counts towards the funding of the construction, which we have not accomplished yet, but everything that we do gets us a step closer, and I think the legal formation of the district is a milestone in that respect, and that's what we're here to do tonight, like I said, our engineers have been working very closely with the EPA on that. I know Lorenzo answered a lot of questions prior to the public meeting opening, it was kind of a, you know, question and answer period there, I know that we've been talking a little bit about the Dogwood Road, Little Switzerland water tank, we really, as the EPA said, that there's two locations for the tank, and one of them was down, there was, we own property across the street from the Little Switzerland well field site, but it's a gully, so that tank would have had to been built up, and it would not really, it would have been a difficult situation, it wouldn't have been good to look at. The tank that is proposed for Little Switzerland off Dogwood, off Dogwood Road, is actually pushed way up into the woods, it's not going to be seen, and I just want to clarify, and we talked about a tank up there, it's going to be like, I think, about a 40-foot-tall concrete structure, it's not going to be your typical water tank, it's going to blend in, part of it's going to be underground, and I believe the capacity, as we said, was going to be something over 300,000 gallons. Now, there seems to be a lot of concern about, and I understand where this all comes from, from previous meetings, with Little Switzerland and the relationship that this water tank's going to have with Little Switzerland, we will have the property appraised, it's about three acres, the property will be appraised by a third-party appraiser, and then we will be able to determine what the value of the area that you will be using as an annual rent, and we're going to do that, and again, I think that this works out best, we, I understand, I've gotten calls from Little Switzerland people, and I understand their concerns, but we will make the tank not stand out, it's going to be as compact and as hidden as possible, but it is a very good location for servicing what it needs to service all the way on your end of this water line. With that, I would defer to the town attorney to talk a little bit about the protections that both systems will have in regards to the location of this tank on that site.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Supervisor, ladies and gentlemen, just to go back to the questions that were raised about the location of the site, there are certain, once a water district is formed, there are certain actions that if the town board elects to borrow money for the district, or expedite, et cetera, are subject to voter approval from folks within the district. So in the past, some of the issues that came up with Little Switzerland, they would have had to go to a vote of the community, and it was unlikely that they would have reached the approval of the Little Switzerland, but the town board acts as the Board of Commissioners of that district, and under Section 198 of the town law, the town board is allowed to arrange for leasing of excess property of a water district, subject only to a public hearing, it's not subject to voter approval. So in this regard, once the town board holds this public meeting, it can then enter into an agreement between the two districts for the location of the tank, that can, that will be a permanent agreement, and as the supervisor indicated, there'd be an appraisal, we'll have some discussions with the EPA about that and the cost of everything, and then an agreement would be approved by the town board with respect to the location of the tank there. So that's the difference between other actions in the past that were proposed that would have required the connection of water lines, drawing of water, which then would have triggered certain voter referendums.
Thank you, thank you, Tom. And so I say, but obviously, you know, everybody, we have to look out for all of our town residents, so I have to look out for the residents of Little Switzerland Water District also, but I've spoken to them, you know, some of the residents at length, and I think that this is going to be something that is not going to impact their community at all, and it is really the best location for a tank for the Hopewell North Water District, so that's how we're going to proceed, and we will authorize a lease agreement at some point, so. That being said, this public hearing is considered the acceptance of the map plan report, the adoption of the map plan report, and the formation of the boundary of the district. Just a couple of points, this district will include, as EPA said, there's going to be a pump station down on 82, it's going to do pumping, I believe, chlorination boosting down there across Old Farm Road, and then there's going to be the water tank that's going to be up off of Dogwood Road, so that is included in tonight's discussion, and I think everybody's gotten a pretty good idea of how that's going to work. Also, this formation, EPA is going to be paying all the construction costs of this, as happened with our Shenandoah Water District, which was another superfund action, the district was formed, and in that case, in that instance, the EPA and IBM, IBM paid for the whole district, the whole construction, turned it over to the town, and we've been operating it since, oh, I believe, 2009, so this would be the same thing in this case. And I do want to just point out the one thing to the residents, there will be a quarterly O and M charge, I mean, as operations, the EPA will build it, but there will always be the operations charge that the residents will be charged in this district, as in all of our water districts, and I believe the charge, when I look at the calculation for this district, are going to be about $500 a year, based quarterly, so that would be your cost for your water, but all the other costs of the, of the main, the hookups, the meters, connections to your house will all be borne by the EPA, so I just wanted to point that out. So, that being said, do I have a motion? Actually, that was a little bit long of an introduction, but I did want to address those couple of issues. That being said, do I have a motion to open the public hearing? Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll before we get going?
Okay. Counselperson Cassidy?
Present.
Counselperson Alessandro?
Present.
Counselperson Franco?
Present.
Counselperson Marinara?
Present.
Supervisor Hickman?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk, present. I'm sorry, a long day today. That being said, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So more.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion, motion to open the public, the public hearing is now opened. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak for or against the adoption of this map plan report and formation of the Hopewell North Water District? Please step up to the podium and ask any questions or voice any concerns that you have.
Evening, Mark Wright, owner of two parcels involved, one at 1138 Route 82, one at number four, Mary Lane. I'm in favor of the project, in fact, I'm so favorable, I'd like to have both of my contiguous parcels included. It goes, it zigzags down Mary Lane to cover the full acre of Hickman property, cuts back, cuts out one of my lots, and then zigzags down and covers the Miller property, Dennis Miller's property, and continues, so it zigzags around one of my parcels, one of my contiguous parcels, so I would just like to have the line moved over 100 feet, for a distance of 200 feet, and that's all, I ask.
I have to ask you, sir, what Hickman property is that, because I don't own any property there.
Well, Hicks, excuse me, Hicks, not Hickman Hicks.
I didn't know there was any Hickman property on Mary or Maple.
I added to you, the name is Hicks.
Oh, okay, okay. That being said, I think, well, actually, that does create a bit of a, well...
I think the concept is, is that the map as it is, is we know it's not perfect, there's probably some situations like yours that could come up, I think that there would be probably over the next few months, perhaps, an amendment to the map slightly to correct things that come up at the public hearing.
And I'm on record of asking for that amendment.
Right, okay.
And I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And sir, you would, just give us some contact, where engineering department, make our engineers aware of the property that you're, that's in question.
Which engineers that?
The town engineers. Thank you. Alrighty, anybody else in the audience like to speak for or against?
Anna Covert, and I will speak for the water district, because I've lived through the water district, being one of the first homes that was identified, my biggest concern, and I want to on record, is putting the tank on the Little Switzerland property and a guarantee that we're not going to suddenly wake up one day and find out that they've cut off access to our water for whatever reason. I would like that built into whatever you put together, that there is a firm, and that they're not going to raise the rates astronomically to meet their needs, because they do have their own individual needs.
Thank you.
My name is Rebecca Choskler-Roder, I am the daughter of the owner of 17 Lenart Place. I have a couple of questions that I would like to be put on the public record, those answers on the public record, so I apologize, but I took some notes, and there are a lot of them more for the EPA than for the town, if that's okay?
Sure.
Okay. One is, just on the record, I'd like to have a better explanation or understanding of the water tank placement into Little Switzerland, I understand the water pressure from, you know, a height perspective, but I want to know if that decision also came down to a cost, like a cost basis, so I think you said something about another option for where to place the storage tank?
And I think I can answer that, we have looked far and wide to find an ideal tank placement site, and I know Mr. Cabral, the engineer for the EPA, mentioned, you know, it'd be a very tall tank on Route 82 somewhere, we've looked all over, the best place for it, to be honest with you, is at that elevation, and that, on that mountain makes the best sense of all. We had also said, as I said before, we looked across the street at where we own some property, but it's rather a gully, and that would be a large tank also, and I would grant you, the cost is always a factor, but this one, I believe, in my opinion, and I think in our engineers' opinions and the EPA, really lends itself the best, the most efficient location.
And is that the EPA's opinion as well?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I will just reiterate, the reason why I asked that is just because of the animosity that was shown by the Little Switzerland residents, really refusing to help us, and I don't know if they really have a choice right now, because it sounds like the town is stepping in on our behalf, which is a wonderful thing, but it's just interesting now that they have the opportunity to make money off of it, I don't really see the same amount of residents here in favor or against it. Another question, you know, is testing the water, once the system's up, how often will that happen, is that part of our operating costs, and what's in place, should any kind of chemicals or issues be found with that?
Well, what we have is, we own, at the present time, we own 10 water systems, three sewer systems, we have an operator, and they conduct all the, and I believe that some of the tests are done daily, some are done, they're done periodically, set periodically by the Department of Health. Your O and M costs include electric for the pump, all those types of things, chemicals to be put into a chlorination, chlorination at both sites, actually, where it leaves our site and at the pumper station site, and testing on a regular basis, just like all of our other water systems, and actually, you know, we base, we base the cost of your O and M on what we experience in our other systems, and we treat it just like all of our other systems.
Okay, and are residents notified, should anything be found to be a problem?
Oh, absolutely, now, I'm not sure, I'm not, I could ask an engineer, I'm not an engineer, but Department of Health, whenever anything arises, we notify everybody in the district.
Okay, and should something arise, what's the contingency plan for a water supply for residents in the water district?
It depends on what happens, if it's simply a water main break, and just dirt getting in, would be simple flushing, things of that nature, basically, it's chlorination, those issues, you'll be, we'll be pumping water from the Hopewell, from the Cannon water well site, so if there, anything happens there, everybody will be notified, do we have a backup plan, not at this time, but we are looking in the future to interconnecting several of our water systems, because we realize we need to redone, so we have the same issue of fish complaints, we're running out two wells, we're drilling another well as we speak, and if anything did happen, it's very difficult, and you need, we need to make these internet connections, we're planning to do that in the near future.
Okay. I know that there was some water pressure issues in the Little Switzerland water district, well, I don't know if it's a water district, but up in Little Switzerland, I don't want to assume this to be correct, I'm assuming that because we're not directly hooking up into them, that those would not become our issues.
You're not even connected, and that is a very old system, too.
Okay. I know in the beginning of all these meetings that there was some options, whether people wanted to hook up or not hook up, so I wanted to know, is it going to be a requirement to hook up, and I think the question was also, will people be allowed, if their wells tested clean and have repeatedly tested clean, will they be allowed to have a spigot still at the house for other kind of, you know, gardening and lawn and things like that?
The answer to that is, if you're in the district, you're in the Plume area that is designated in that district, you will be required to hook up, EPA will make the connection for you, they do all the installation, you will have to abandon the well, the EPA will also do that, because, just because your water tests good today, and nobody's going to be testing it once you're connected, we're very concerned with what you might be spraying, and I think, we think it'd be very prudent.
Okay. How often will an appraisal be done on the property in Little Switzerland, should, you know, we've all suffered from the market changes, and our home appraisals have gone down, you know, they've been up and they've been down, so will the property be appraised on a consistent basis, so that it's always held at a fair market?
I don't know if we would do that, sure.
First of all, the law allows boards to enter into a 30-year agreement, so it'll be a long-term agreement.
And I think the question was also, will people be allowed to, if their wells tested clean and have repeatedly tested clean, will they be allowed to have a spigot still at the house for other kind of, you know, gardening and lawn and things like that?
The answer to that is, if you're in the district, you're in the plume area that is designated in that district, you will be required to hook up. EPA will make the connection for you, they do all the installation. You will have to abandon the well, the EPA will also do that, because, just because your water tests good today, and nobody's gonna be testing it once you're connected, we're very concerned with what you might be spraying.
Future.
And I think, we think it'd be very prudent.
Okay. How often will an appraisal be done on the property in Little Switzerland? Should, you know, we've all suffered from the market changes, and our home appraisals have gone down, you know, they've been up and they've been down. So will the property be appraised on a consistent basis so that it's always held at a fair market?
I don't know if we would do that, sure.
First of all, the law allows for it to enter into a 30-year agreement.
Okay.
So it'll be a long-term agreement, and I think that we shouldn't focus, it's not, it's an appraisal of a vacant little piece of land the size of a tank. So it's not like it's an astronomical amount.
Well, I just wanna make sure that, you know, all of our questions are answered in advance.
Yes.
You know?
Yeah.
I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Judy Phillips. Our family owns the farm on 82. When they came last year to check out, they told me that they had to disconnect, will be disconnecting, we will have to hook up. My concern was that our well is on, up on another plume, higher up, and, and my water comes from there. So they assured us, the farmer and me, that they would not disconnect the barns and the, where the cows get their water. I would like to have that in writing so that when this all happens, they don't force us to pay for town water to water the cows.
Okay, but we do want the cows to have healthy water. You know that.
Well, our well is, has, it's in a different plume. It's up on the hill, and it's not ever been polluted.
Different aquifer, you mean?
Hmm?
It's any different aquifer, you mean?
Yes.
Not a different...
Yeah, aquifer, yes.
I mean, have two plumes.
So it's not affected by this.
We can discuss...
So, you know, I think that, that needs to be brought to attention. Also, I was made aware that in Hyde Park, when they did a Water District, on a farm, they made them pay for the amount of lots that they thought the farm would eventually be broken into, and the people lost their farm because they could not afford that. I wanna make sure that doesn't happen.
We actually looked very closely at your property, because it's the same scenario, and we wanted to make sure that didn't happen. You were assessed so many. I don't know, Paul, can you answer any of these questions right now?
The benefit unit question?
The benefit units, and the fact that Judy's, her water for the cows comes from another well, I don't know.
Right, correct. The well is located way up on the hill.
Way up on the hill.
Separate.
So...
The farmer took the people up.
Domestic use for the two, the White House and the raised ranch down the road that's on the...
The raised ranch is separate. They, they're polluted.
That's right.
Right, but they're gonna get water.
But the only two is the house and those two. Then the line stops.
And we're still gonna allow the cows to have the good water from up on the hill. We can put, we can, we can put that somewhere in there to make sure the cows get their water from up on the hill.
Okay. Thank you.
But I will have to check on it. We will definitely take a look at that, Judy.
I mean, we've tested for well.
Because I would have to, frankly, I would have to go back to look at my records.
Yeah, we'll have to take a look at that. We'll certainly consider that one, because we wanna make sure that the farm, the farm animals are okay. So, alrighty. Judy, could you give us a call, say tomorrow or Monday? And let's discuss this further, because I hadn't thought about the well that feeds the farm up on the, up on the hill, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you.
Tom, I have a question, if I may. Do we have any kind of contracts at this time, as far as leasing that piece of property? There's been a lot of questions asked, as far as the cost...
Well, Little Switzerland is a public water district that's under the control of the town board, so as long as the five members of the town board wanna have a 30-year agreement between the two districts, then that happens.
I was referring to the contract as far as leasing the property. Do we have any numbers for the community at this time?
I think the...
Well, I think we said we had to get an appraisal.
Yeah, we have to get the appraisal confirmed, but the appraiser indicated that, you know, it's probably gonna be in the neighborhood of $2,000, $3,000. Okay?
And the other clarification is that when a Water District is created, are we under the understanding that whether you hook up or not, the costs will be paid by all residents of that district? Or can somebody be excluded from the costs? Can, do we have a...
Well, in this district, this district is unique because the Environmental Protection Agency is paying all of the capital costs, so the only cost that an individual user will pay is the operation and maintenance cost.
Correct.
As we say...
Like the lady that came from the farm, will she...
Well, if you look at her, her property...
Excuse me, Tom, excuse me, ma'am. I don't, did you see the map plan report? Did you read the breakdown of the, I think the farm was in there?
Yeah.
And she was assessed a couple of benefit units just for that.
But it's only the front piece of the farm along 82. It doesn't go the way back.
I'm concerned about the other part. Absolutely, we'll take a look at that.
The situation in Hyde Park, there was bonded indebtedness that the people had to pay.
Yeah, that was...
If there was a bonded indebtedness, then everybody has to pay their proportionate share of it.
Right.
But in this particular case, there is no bonded indebtedness.
Yeah.
And if you look at the map for the farm, it's only, I don't know how deep it goes, but it only goes along Route 82.
Right.
So the back of the farm property is not in the Water District, and that's probably because the well is feeding it elsewhere.
And we specifically considered that when we drew the district, just so that you know, and I believe that was in the map plan report.
Yeah, I know, there was a discussion last time. I just wanted to clarify for them. Some question had been raised.
Okay. Anybody else in the audience like to speak for or against the formation and adoption of this map plan report?
Hello. My name is Barbara Seguin. I live on 1285 Route 82. We were the first people to be found with the pollution. I have a few questions. I am definitely for it, the new Water District. It's a, it's about time. I hope that you can, as speedily as possible, get it to be remedied. I have a question. Okay, you say the operation and maintenance is gonna be $500 a year. Does that include your water usage?
I believe...
Meter reading?
Excuse me?
Does that include the meter reading of your water usage?
Yes. I'll look at the breakdown again, but it had to do with everything, flushing, meter reading, everything as far as billing.
Because the other Water Districts are charged quarterly by the amount of usage.
Yes.
I'm wondering, is that what you...
Well, about $500...
It's projection.
Thank you. Okay, and...
But I'd like to point, there is a minimum, I think it was based on the minimum also.
Right, on how much you use. Okay. What happens to the old wells that are contaminated on your property? Are we responsible to...
No. Paul, would you like to answer what happens to the old wells on the property that have to be abandoned? If you speak up here or over there, whichever.
I know, this has been, we've had a couple of discussions already on this.
Yes.
The, we want to grout and seal up the old wells, all right? So that there's nothing liability left.
At our expense.
No, we would, we believe we're doing it.
We, I believe...
Part of, part of...
You've painted Shenandoah, and I believe it would be the same in this case.
Yes.
Okay. And another question is, we are gonna buy property that's next door to us, has a existing well that has been tested, and, and part of the good thing about buying the property was that it was a well, was on there, a Board of Health approved, tested well. Now what happens to that well?
It's outside of the district?
It's next door, so it's in the district.
If it's in the district, is there a house on the property right now?
Not yet.
Okay. So it is a lot that has a...
Approved well.
Approved well, but it's not developed.
Correct.
That is, I don't know if we've necessarily considered that.
Well, if it's in the district, the health department's not gonna give you permit for the well, they'll make you connect.
Then it's gonna, we're gonna have to close it and dig, just like, yeah.
But if, if you identify that it's there when they're doing it, they'll close that lot, too.
Okay.
But there's no property there right now.
There's no building.
No building.
There's no building there right now.
It's just property.
So there's nothing...
With a well.
Right, but there's nothing for us to connect there yet, or...
No.
But you would abandon the well for it.
Right. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I just don't know, never, I haven't considered that situation.
What company is currently taking care of the water departments?
We have a company named JCO.
Okay, it's not VRI anymore.
No, no.
No.
And so they will take on this one, too?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
How you doing? David Hall, 130 Creamery Road. I'm in favor of the Water District, just a couple of quick questions. You mentioned the rent that we'd be paying Little Switzerland, approximately $2,000, give or take. Would that be monthly, quarterly?
Yearly.
Yearly?
That's in the rates, that's...
In the handout we got, it says that we're gonna be billed for a minimum of $9,000 gallons.
That's a minimum, the town, we build, we, we charge everybody minimum $9,000.
And then everything over that would be per thousand gallons?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Anything above that would be per thousand gallons?
I believe that's how it's, that's how it's charged, yes.
Regarding the, the Little Switzerland property, property up there, has the town considered the possibility of using eminent domain to take that land so that we're not forced to have to pay rent?
Well, I don't think it'd be...
What happens is if we went, if the town board went to sell that property, then that triggers a permissive referendum possibility for the voters in Little Switzerland. So it was thought that the most expedient way to do it is the arrangement that we're proposing.
So, no.
30-year lease, no.
You, you didn't look at eminent domain?
No, well, we, well, we wouldn't have to use eminent domain, because the town board could hold a public hearing to propose to sell it, but that action is subject to a waiting period for a permissive referendum. If the voters come in and turn it down, then you can't sell it.
Okay. The town, you also said that there's a piece of property up there that you guys own, that the town owns?
Mm-hmm.
And that it's in a gully? For us as residents, that would be rent-free, as, for us, right? That would be rent-free property if our tank was put on there?
Would it be rent-free, or would there be any value to it?
No, not necessarily, because if that's owned by the general town fund, then the town board would have to sell the property to the Water District.
But it's...
There would be a fee for it.
It's town property.
But, but we have to understand, a Water District is for the benefit of those whose properties are within the Water District.
Right.
So if the town owns a piece of property on Route 82, and it's owned by all the taxpayers of the town, and you're now gonna convert that use to a use that's only for those people within the Water District, the same issue arises that we have with the use of the Little Switzerland piece. You have to have some agreement and some consideration to the taxpayer group that has contributed and owns that piece.
Okay, so say, just for argument's sake, that the EPA decided, in their good graces, to purchase that property from the town. Would that be an option?
If the site was usable for the tanks, but I think there's an engineering issue on it.
Well, was that, it would, it's not, wouldn't be high enough, you would have to build up high, and it's...
It's literally, I've never seen, of any console I've ever seen, that is probably one of the worst consequences to try to build. It's a ravine, there's a lot of stormwater drainage, there's a lot of...
Really?
But if I could...
Because, you know, it was mentioned that, you know, it would be unsightly, and we already know that Little Switzerland doesn't like anything that obstructs views.
We understand.
They have an issue with that, so I get that.
We understand your train of thought, but we really feel that that location would be the best.
But if I, if I could, though, just to address, to kinda put in some kind of perspective, I think the rents we're kind of thinking would be in a range of like, say, 15 cents per thousand gallons, 20 cents per thousand gallons. Your rate right now is projected at $6.62, you know, so to kinda put it in perspective, it's, it's really not that much. You know, 15 cents is 15 cents, but...
Right.
It's not that much. And if we did endeavor to go to this other site, it is a very difficult site, and just even in the winter maintenance of maintaining the road up and down, I think would get eaten up, a lot of that would get eaten up.
The rate you have sort of quoted in here is figuring in...
Yes.
The rent that we're paying.
Everything.
We think that's it.
Everything else.
Everything is it.
Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me, but when you're answering questions...
You need to.
...we can't hear.
Oh, yeah. You gotta have to lean forward, speak into the microphone. Anybody else like to speak for or against?
Hi, my name is Chris Villa. I live at 100 Clover Ranch Road. I have some questions. I'm not in favor, I'm not against. I'm interested, because one lady just asked a question about keeping your own well, and in Shenandoah and in the other meetings, it was brought up, that it was questioned about it, and they said there was a possibility...
Yeah.
...to be able to keep your own well. I know in Shenandoah, there are people there who have kept their own wells, and they're not in their Water District. Personally, myself, I don't wanna take another chance of having town water. My wife got cancer over this situation in the beginning. I felt that IBM created a mess here when they came here in '63. I don't think the DEP, or the EPA, or the town really watched them enough. They kinda had carte blanche to do whatever they wanted, and there's a lot of people who got cancer. So I personally feel that myself and my family, I, I do not want to get involved with the Water District, because I've been involved with water treatment plants, I worked on them, and I know what their capabilities are. In that, in that point there, I wondered why, in the beginning, there was questions about re-drilling people's wells. That would be a lot cheaper for all of us at the town. I don't know why that was not brought up anymore. I think it's a good concept, because the wells that are deep wells, they don't have contaminations. And it would be, I think, for all of us, a lot cheaper for the town, and I think it would be important that it would, they would give that a thought. And like I said, I, I would like to have them, that entertained on my point, especially with long driveways, there's people who have long driveways like myself, it would cost an awful lot. I'm sure if you come through with the water system, you're gonna put a curb cock and a lateral in, and if they wanna have water brought in on their own, they can do that at their own expense down the road. But my personal feeling is that, after all the things that went on, since 1963, I'm not very happy, and I'm not very safe with the idea about, about the water system for her. And there was a quote in the paper, which really, I'm sure a lot of people saw it, and I didn't, I didn't really feel that it was, it was very good for us in this town. It said, "Because the EPA term in that Hopewell Junction Precision did not have the financial capa, capacity to pay for the remedy, the burden falls on the taxpayers." Well, taxpayers had nothing to do with this, you know? It was the higher-ups and all the organizations that should've kept IBM, too, and they didn't. So that's my opinion.
Are you talking about the EPA, the IBM, or are you talking about the Hopewell Precision?
The whole thing was all based from IBM. Hopewell Precision was taking care of cleaning mainframes for IBM.
Oh, I just thought they did painting for military operations.
And there's a lot of other places in, in this town that were, that had dump sites and everything else that IBM controlled. But the point is, I just feel in my personal opinion, I'm not gonna take a chance having my wife get sick again.
Okay.
I know what I have now with the charcoal filter, it's been doing a great job and that's what I really like to keep.
Okay, we appreciate that. And we have looked, I know the EPA's looked at all the different options, including drilling deeper wells and, and keeping the power systems also. And Lorenzo, I was gonna ask just really quickly, and I know there's been questions brought up about the Hopewell Precision not having the financial wherewithal to do this, but I think that that, at the end, that's a Justice Department, uh, activity to go after them to see if they can recoup any, and I'm just asking, I know you're not involved with that, but at the end of this whole process, I believe they will look to Hopewell Precision to see what they, they can recover as far as cost, I'm not sure.
I can just say that the enforcement proceeding is proceeding as we speak.
And that's a separate, that's a separate procedure.
Right, I tell you, Andrew Prusak is working on that proceeding.
I thought so, great, thank you. Anybody else like to speak for or against the formation of this district?
My name's Kurt Muller, I live on 119 Creamery Road and I'm for the system. However, I have two questions. One is, how often is the water gonna be tested? And the second is, everything looks good up until the end of this year. Where's the money coming for the bill?
Yeah.
What's the process and what's the chances of getting that money?
Sure, Kurt, sure. Quickly, I'm not an engineer, water testing, do they do that?
Well, there's different tests, you know, they're, they're testing your chlorine residual daily, you know, on one end.
What we're seeing now.
Oh.
Oh, do you
Oh, okay.
groundwater?
Yeah, well, I mean, that, that kind of testing, I mean, our wells are way over here.
I think you're talking about the plume, the testing of the plume.
Are you thinking that it might be impacted by the plume if it comes down? Okay. Do they test, uh?
It's quarterly.
Is it quarterly?
Yeah.
But what, are you talking about the proposed water or your existing?
Yeah, the water that we're
Oh, the new water.
Yeah.
Right, right, but I mean, there's very, there's various tests that go anywhere from
That's what I'm asking.
daily to annually, quarterly, there's, there's various tests. All regulated by the health department.
But we're told it's done quarterly.
There are certain chemicals that are tested for it.
And they'll be regulated under the, say, drinking water.
Right. There's a schedule for each parameter.
So the same test we have now?
As does Little Switzerland and some other water districts.
Yeah. All of our water districts are tested regularly as far as, uh, the part of health regulations.
And the process to get the money for the bill?
Well, that was, and this is, like I said in the beginning, this is another step towards getting that. Lorenzo, would you like to speak a little bit about, um, the construction funding that we're seeking? When is that, when does that go and when, who does it go before?
All right, I can just say what we have told you all over the last couple of years, especially coming from a higher level management. Like, right now, we are looking forward to completing the ongoing remedial design by the end of this calendar year. That would take us into fiscal year 2016, which would start on October 1st, 2015. It runs from October 1st through September 30th of the following year. And as you know Supervisor, Hopewell Superfund Site was ranked per the guidelines given to us by the National Risk-Based Priority Panel about three years ago. That risk number came in very high and we did get the money, but because we did not have the viable water source, we had to give it back. And every fiscal year, we have to go up to Risk-Based National Priority Panel that consists of all the program experts within the Superfund Program. And when the site is ready, typically at 95% design stage, which would be September this year, we would be going back to the Risk-Based Panel with the Hopewell Site. As I said, the site was scored three years ago, that same score will be used, but, uh,
Well, will that change because now we'll be ranked against new sources?
Exactly, I was just gonna say that. So there are three main factors that are considered by this National Risk-Based Priority Panel. Number one, very important, it depends on what the annual budget appropriation is, uh, will be given to, to us by the Congress. You know, over the years, that number has been dwindling quite significantly, some years like 20, 25%. So that's the first big factor, it depends on that. Second is the, uh, the amount of other onsite construction work that is ongoing, that needs to be funded before new construction projects that haven't started. And so it depends on what other sites in the country that have those ongoing construction projects. And the second one, the third and final is obviously what the scores of the other construction projects will be when the Hopewell Site is ready for funding. So if our schedule holds, uh, September 9th, 2015, we get 95% design package. That would be good enough for us to go back to the Risk-Based Panel. The score is already there, it just depends on appropriation by the Congress and also other Superfund Site construction work and what their scores are.
So what, what's the, the soonest time that you would know that you would have the money?
Because, uh, you know, I'm not, uh, in close involvement at headquarters, my high-level managements are always in communication with those folks that make up this panel.
But it would be the, obviously, 2016 sometime.
Yeah, that's what we are shooting for, especially in design. And also I want to say that the success and completion of the Hopewell remedial design is dependent on a few things. Number one, you know, timely creation of the Hopewell North Water District and also the, uh, timely development and construction of the East Fishkill Water Service Area. Because when the design is ready and say, like hypothetically speaking, we have the money, that water has to be ready for us to use to connect to the Hopewell North Water District. And also last thing, you know, we are working with Town of East Fishkill to finalize the connection fee because we would pay like proportional fee for using the, uh, East Fishkill water. That'd be like proportional cost and that's something that we are, you know,
Working out, yeah.
Going on with our negotiations with Supervisor.
But I think, I think to your question is, we're trying, we're gonna hit, we're very hopeful to hit the October application for review of this project again and that's why it's so important that we get these little milestones like formation of the district, finishing up our well field, the well testing and all that. We need to have a complete package to bring up to them. And I don't, and we, after we submit to them in October, it's still gonna be months before we actually get a decision, I believe, but.
I would think so, but, you know, we'll know at that time, you know. But definitely, right now, we're on schedule. You know, if we get 95%, that's good enough usually to go back to the Risk-Based Panel.
What's your feeling?
We can't, we can't say that.
I wish I could give you an answer, you know, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But, you know, I can say that the score that we got three years ago was pretty high. And, uh, you know, I think there's a reasonable chance, but we'll know when the time comes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask also, does that score represent the amount of years that it's been labeled a Superfund Site? Is that based, the score's based upon that also?
I mean, it puts into account, you know, public health and environment, uh, the risks for the two.
If there's other sites that get scored also, what if one Superfund Site's been for 15 years and one's been waiting for 20 years? Does that make a difference?
I mean, I see your question, uh, but all I know is that when we go back to the Risk-Based Panel, we're gonna be using the same score that we got. And I don't think that that score that we got three years ago is going to be readjusted. That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Lorenzo.
I have a question, uh, two questions. One is, uh, when the water comes into the building, will the EPA supply a shut-off and a water meter?
Yes.
And the other question is, will modern technology be used like to keep the monthly service charge down?
Mm-hmm.
Like automatic water meter reading?
Yes.
Okay. That's it.
Thank you. But just like, uh, our Shenandoah, I think we have drive-bys there, yeah, and they would be the same meters. Okay, any other questions? Okay, there, any questions from the board? Anybody, Manny?
I just got one question.
Uh, we have a couple more people coming up.
In some of the older districts, if you don't hook up, you still pay the minimum O and M. That's not even gonna be an option here if you don't want to type?
If you don't hook up?
If you don't hook up?
No, in the other districts, you pay capital, you don't pay O and M if you don't hook up.
Right.
But in this district, you will be hooked up if you're in that district.
So there is no option to not hook up, is what I'm saying.
No.
Because like he was kind of saying, if he doesn't want to hook up, is there a way that we could bill him, uh, hypothetical?
Well, there's no
A way we could bill him for the minimum O and M without hooking up?
No. No. I mean, in, in a district where there's capital, you could still bill them for the capital costs, but you can't the O and M. I don't believe you can bill them for O and M if they're not actually physically hooked up. Is that correct, Scott? Tom? I believe so. Okay. Yes?
Deborah Hall, 130 Creamery Road. I know that Toll Brothers and other people need water in the town. My fear is that they will start getting their, you'll, you'll get it complete and the EPA will not get the money for us, maybe the first or maybe even the second year that they try. And that, in that time, Toll Brothers and other, um, places that need the water will start getting hooked in because they'll have the money to do it. How much water is there and when, when is there a cutoff that we're like left again in the, in, you know?
Scott, could you ask, could you respond to that?
Just to put your mind at ease, the water supply, uh, application is before the D E C right now. Uh, basically, you know, uh, states how much each district is gonna be allocated. So right now, we have 130,000 gallons set aside for, for your district and, you know, each other district that we have has a certain set aside and that's fixed in the permit. So, so we would, in theory, have to go back to the D E C to amend that permit to make any adjustment to that. So, so our, so our, our permit's gonna have 130,000 dedicated to your
So you're gonna hold that for us no matter what?
Yeah.
Even if it's 10 years?
Be up to the town.
Up to the town board.
Let me just, let me just
Please?
But I would also add, we only have two wells and we're good for
And we
400,000 gallons a day, we have room for more wells, so.
Yeah, so we can drill more, it will be available. We have it set aside for you, but if circumstances change, we have it there for you anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I have one more question, John.
Did you want to come up? Yeah, you gotta come up.
Sorry.
No, no problem.
I'm a little confused. Anybody that has a well that's not contaminated in this?
If you're in the district, Chris, yeah. And I know you're not
Their well is not contaminated.
Right.
And they're down 150 feet in bedrock.
Right.
They're gonna have to hook up to this?
That's because you're in the, you're in that area where the plume has been identified, Chris, I know. And I understand your feeling.
Yeah, but it's, you, you have to understand something here, okay? First of all, I have a very long driveway, it's gonna be very, very expensive to come in there. Like I said, if I, if it ended up being that I sold the house, the person that buys my house, you're gonna have a curb cock at the end of my driveway, they can make the connection, they gotta do it themselves and they gotta pay for it. I want the same opportunity that Shenandoah had. And I'm gonna be perfectly honest with you, I, I can't take that chance again. She got real sick and what we went through, I'm not taking it. And I'm sure there's people in this room that probably have relatives that went through it. I'm not trying to pin the blame on anybody, but I am definitely don't want that.
You don't, yeah.
I definitely don't. I have a system now that's been fantastic.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I'll maintain it myself, whatever I have to do, but I am not taking another chance of my wife getting sick. I'm married 50 years this year, I'm not losing her.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I, you know, you have to understand where I'm coming from. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.
Rebecca Chaskler-Roder again, sorry to ask another question. At what point is there no, like after everything goes well, um, and we get the EPA funding and things like this, at what point, um, can we not go back to use EPA money as a Superfund Site and that all the cost becomes the town and the people within the district? I guess I'm asking for, you know, if something breaks or
Yeah, when they build the whole system, they'll build it all out, connect everybody and the inspectors will inspect it, sign off on it. At that point, it's turned over to the town?
And the EPA.
Then, and that, from the EPA to the Town of East Fishkill, and at that point, then it becomes a town district and then if you have a water main break or some issues after that, then it would be, then would be a town water district, uh, responsibility.
So then it, no, it kind of becomes like a Superfund Site that's been fixed and the EPA walks away, is that
Well, they, they have other, because after they do the, this part of this, there's remediation, I believe, of the plume that is like phase three of this whole process.
Okay.
So I believe the water is just, uh, one phase in the whole process.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And correct me if I'm wrong, Lorenzo, but I do believe there's remediation after this.
Yeah, this is one of the two of the units, the other one addresses the entire
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bill Gage, I live at, uh, 15 Barris Lane. It's a cul-de-sac right off of Clover Ranch. You know, um, I'm sitting here listening to all of this and, of course, been involved from the beginning and, uh, judging by a few other people in the room by the color of their hair, their lack of it, that I'm thinking the resolution of this will probably fall to our heirs. You know, I realize in all due respect, the efforts that the EPA has put in and the efforts that the town has put in and the difficulty in trying to resolve this very difficult problem. But, I heard a gentleman say that he has trouble getting reports from the EPA. In all due respect to the EPA, if you guys keep coming and you keep testing air and you keep testing the wells and we allow you to come do that and we keep saying, listen, please just give us the report, we'd like the report. So I, I'd just like to go on record that with all these efforts and all this long time to get a report, shouldn't be too
Much to ask, I wouldn't think.
The other is, is that I have been asking for as many years and long before 13, every person that's come to my house to do these tests for a copy of the map that shows the plume.
Mm-hmm.
Now, it's nice to hear that the plume hasn't grown and it, and it's not getting any worse, but I'd like to, to see, get a copy of my own. So I'd just like to go on record for that and I'm sure there's probably other folks that may feel somewhat
I do, and I would like to ask, is it at the library?
Yeah, not only at the library, some of the information is on the Hopewell website too.
Bill?
Yeah.
Excuse me, I, I do think they, they keep a, a file at the library, do you want to go check, see if, I believe there's a map at the library?
Oh, more than the map, and also the, uh, the public availability session that we had last year, January 2014. The PowerPoint that I used at that session is on Hopewell website.
Okay, so I guess I'll look at those.
There's some access to the map, I guess.
Okay, I'll look for those resources.
Yeah, I know if you go to the library in the reference section, they keep that over there.
But again, just for the record, I'll look for those resources.
Yeah.
But how is it that I originally got a map? I mean, I didn't go looking for it, someone sent it to me.
Really?
I'm just simply saying is that, there could be some greater, it seems to me anyway, there could be some greater consideration to the residents, that's all. And I just want to record for that.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Okay.
Scott, Scott, the engineer, I have one quick question.
Yes.
You said that the set aside was 130,000 gallons that, that per day, right?
Average daily use, yeah.
Average daily use. In their booklet here, they said a maximum of 260.
That's a, that would be a peak day.
Okay.
Yeah, but the permit is based on average day.
Okay, thank you.
Ann Kovar, I'm back. This isn't specifically the water, but some of us with the water are also air contaminated. Is the EPA gonna continue to maintain and monitor that?
You're talking about those homes that already have sub slot ventilation?
Yes.
Yeah, they go through, I believe, DANSYAP on ground and we all go in that, we don't.
Okay, I was just wondering, because somebody mentioned the air and sort of forgot about that, because some of us do have both systems.
Yeah, we are gonna be doing both, uh, sub slot ventilation system and the other one, point-of-entry treatment system. Point of system, we do it water.
Right, okay, just wondering.
All righty, anybody else have anything to say for or against, uh, the adoption of the map plan and report formation of the district? There being none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried, the public hearing is now closed. Tom, I'd just like to ask your opinion on this, I mean, you've heard, there, there's gonna be some little map changes here and there. Would it be appropriate to adopt the map plan and report tonight?
You could adopt it because I think the issues that were raised could be addressed with a supplemental
With a supplemental review. All righty, very good. Do I have a motion to adopt the map plan report, uh, forming the Hopewell North Water District and location of its necessary improvements? Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. I do hope that in October, we, we get looked on very favorably for funding. Thank you for attending. And I'd like to thank the East Fishkill Fire Headquarters for letting us use their room.
Adjourn, motion to adjourn.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.